Jim, before you begin, I can't hear anybody.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Jen.
Thank you, everybody, for showing up for this last meeting of the Board of Trustees for the year. Last regular meeting. We still have a couple zoning commission meetings or VZA meetings.
We do tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Yeah.
So there'll be a meeting tomorrow here. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of the emergency meeting for December 15, 2021. The special meeting minutes of December 15, 2021, and the December 7 regular meeting minutes from December 7, 2021.
Second.
Second by Augustine and for the discussion on those minutes, trustees.
No.
No.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Make sure you sign them. There's three sets, okay?
Yes, sir.
Do that at the end of the meeting. We have two special guests here tonight. Which one would you like to go first?
I think we should start with.
Colleen and Jack Swedick, would you come forward, please? And your wife, your lovely wife. You want to take the helm?
I'm not doing anything. She's got it all under control. Yeah, where would you like us to move to?
Christmas tree. So Jack Swedick is being sworn in tonight by his wife, Colleen Swedick, for the trustee opening for 2022 through 5.
Raise your right hand. Getting ready. Okay, I, Jack Swedick.
I, Jack Swedick.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And will faithfully discharge.
And will faithfully discharge.
The duties of trustee.
The duties of trustee.
Of Hinkley Township and Medina County.
Of Hinkley Township and Medina County.
State of Ohio.
State of Ohio.
During my continuance in office.
During my continuance in office.
Thank you very much. Just want to say I'm very grateful. I'm looking forward to next four years. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jack. Next, I'd like to turn the floor over to Mr. Gibson. And you know what? You need to get a microphone up to Mr. Gibson. Mr. Gibson, would you like to address us from the podium, please?
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. You got a green light on that, Chief? Thank you.
All right, is that going to come through all right?
Oh, it's going to come through right now. If it isn't, Jenny and Bern are out there on virtual will let us know. It's very sensitive. You can talk in a normal voice.
All right. Forgot my mask.
Let me introduce you first to the public. Mr. Charles Gibson, a longtime Hinkley resident, is here tonight to make a donation of 22 acres of land to the township. The land is in conservancy, being held by Western Reserve Land Conservancy. And with that, I'll turn the microphone to the podium to you.
All right. Do all the trustees actually have a copy of the agreement?
I pull it up online.
You don't have, I have several copies.
We have all seen it. We've got an original coming from the attorneys.
We have an original here, but if you have an extra.
Would you like us to follow along?
Yes.
I'm going to use my laptop.
Use some of the current, but not all of them. But if you don't have one.
Would you mind if I have a copy, Mr. Gibson?
That'd be great.
I'll get two of them.
All right. Thank you so much.
Line's covered as well.
I do, I do not. Thank you. If you have an extra, I'll put it in the record. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Very good.
All right. I am going to pull down through just some of the pertinent items on the, on the agreement. In paragraph one, which starts, there are five paragraphs. We believe we are not going to take all the time to review everything. This is a gift. There is money exchanged in the law. I mean, this, I want, I really want to preserve the land. I think Hinkley needs to stay rural in character. Excuse me, I don't know whether I'm getting a cold or not, but it's transmitting it into my voice. It's 22 acres. It's under a conservation easement right now. I have about 65 total acres. And 22 are part of that. And that's the only part that I have that's on the conservation easement with the land, Western Reserve Land Conservancy. This was a farm that I acquired, that we, my wife and I acquired from her parents. Probably about, they acquired it supposedly in 1921. So we're looking basically at a 100-year-old farm, which it may get classified as if we apply to Ohio. The, and that, their name was Devoki. And that's why I'm going to have two names associated with this donation. So the terminology you're seeing in the agreement itself states buyer, buyers. I'm a seller, well, technically I'm a donor. And then you can see the term buyer. Buyers usually mean that there's money transacted. In this instance, there's not. They are recipients. And that, that term does also apply here as well. So just be aware that that's the case for them as buyers. On paragraph four, there's a comment about closing, the dates involved with closing. Technically, staying here, the title should transfer by December 31st. I think at this point, I'm not sure whether it's going to actually transmit today or tomorrow. Or whether it'll be by the 31st, but I would like to get it done by the end of the year.
So what I'd like to do, if it's okay with you, we've talked about this before. This land has a CAUV attached to it. And the township can have that waived or pushed back so we don't have to carry the fee for that. We're waiting for paperwork from the auditor's office. I did hear back from Mr. Kovak. When we see that paperwork, we're in a process of the answer being yes, we are going to close to take possession, the deed we registered before December 31st. Should the board approve?
That will work. And yet I do bring up the CAUV category here later on, just so you're aware. I mean, you are aware of it.
Yep.
You want to add to it, mind continue to have the CAUV on the property. All right, going on to paragraph six, called pro-rations. There, the general taxes are obviously pro-rated, like a normal document transfer or property transfer. I'm responsible until the date of closing, and you then will be responsible for that afterwards, and it will be pro-rated. That's where I also bring up then the fact of the CAUV, as you just mentioned. This is the fact that you're going to want to have, pick that up as soon as I leave off. And there won't be any required recovery involved in the CAUV. It's going to be continuous, even though it's going from a new, from one owner to a new owner. All right, looking at seven, charges. They, again, I'm responsible, and I will pay the pro-rations if I am, is ownership of the property until the deed transfers. I will pay my own attorney's fees, and you will be responsible then for the deed recording fees, costs, any transfer checks, or anything that normally would be paid to the buyer, such as if they, if you, if you weren't a governmental entity, you would have to pay the Western Reserve, it's approximately 2% of the land value, and you don't have to do that, make sure. But in the event that there's any other fees involved, that would be picked up by the township. And also your own attorney fees. All right, that is seven. Looking at nine, you're accepting the land in as-is condition. And I'm sure you're aware of that, and that it is going to be whatever it is right now. It is, is as-is. I'm not enhancing anything. I'm not changing anything. There's nothing wrong with the property. It's just prime vacant, nice rid, area of land and so on. Okay, we're getting down to the end. The title, the property deed will be in the name of trustees of Hinkley Township, that will now be the new owners of the property of 22 acres on State Road, about halfway between Center Road 333 and Bellas Road on the east side of the street. All right, looking at paragraph 13, tax contingencies and tax value. There is a statement in there that I am, I am wanting to meet a tax deduction goal. And it seems like everything is working towards that being not a problem. I do have until Friday, that if something comes up where it causes a problem, I'm able to step back from the actual agreement. I don't anticipate that happening, and I want to go forward with it for you. But I do have that clause at the last page to make sure that I can have that deduction arrangement. The appraisal, it indicates here I have hired a qualified appraiser to determine the value of it. It's not anything you're getting for nothing. As a result, you may not really care what the property value is, but it does to me. And I hope she has a figure right now for the value of the property. Because it's probably going to be somewhere between $220 to a quarter of a million dollars of value to the property. Unfortunately, he's not done. He himself had gotten COVID, so he's delayed the process. He's also had no trouble getting comparable properties that are also kind of conservation easement to compare to in a way of value. So he hopes to have it done by the end of the year. And that's also important for me too, so I'm pushing him on that. All right, that's, now the last paragraph we'll talk about is 14, that's the deed covenants. And the first one is signage. And you asked me what I wanted to have in the way of the sign. And bear with me while I, you actually gave me the, yeah, here it is. And this is what they're looking at doing. I really can't read it back for a moment now. But anyway, it basically says, and I'm open to suggestions for the naming, but I threw out the words, Hinkley Hills Reserve. I could go Hinkley Ridge Reserve. Either one of those are perfectly fine. And whatever you folks would like to have in the way of either Hinkley Hills or Hinkley Ridge Reserve would be fine. And it says, and it'll be what's on the sign. Commemorating this generous donation made by the Gibson and Devoki family to the Hinkley Township on this. And they're using the 31st day of December as the date. Wanting to make this land forever conservation to benefit the community and wildlife. That is perfectly okay with me as far as the sign is concerned.
Yeah.
Stipulating its size, it should be somewhere in the neighborhood of three to four feet by three to four feet. So that it is legible, and you can read, maybe not read the small print, but you could read most of it and the title as you drive by on the street. That is what I like to see. And there is a sign there now that commemorates it as a conservation easement property. Western Reserve Land Conservancy put that up. I would hope that it would be maybe 50 to 100 feet away from that, so it wouldn't compete with it. All that, that would be the size and possibly the location of it, locate on that. All right. Some set of B under that paragraph, conservation easement. That's something that, that I'm indicating the township will have to abide by the restrictions. And I'm sure you're aware of what that will mean in a way of knowing that it is a conserve property. And they will inspect once a year and make sure there are no enrochements from neighbors. And they do that. And you might want to walk around with them on a date. They used to do it in the fall, October or November is when they make the walk.
Okay.
And that's about all the requirements at this point in time.
Let me ask a question. Was Western Reserve land conserved? We're going to stop that. I'm going to reclaim host. Just letting you know what we're doing here.
It's fine. You don't have to put me on at all.
And I'm not proud of that.
That's okay.
You're online. Just need to pin a video on.
Jim, I could hear you. I cannot see you at this point.
I don't want you to see me. I'm working on that. Offline, Jen?
Just the Hinkley Conference went offline.
Okay, I see videos, video's dead here. We should have fixed it. Good?
We're back on.
See what I did?
You're good.
Okay.
All right, then we'll get in this video so we can see this on our, thank you for patience, Mr. Gibson. Hey, Jen, can you pin? Oh, we're good now. Thank you. Okay, you got it fixed for us. All right, so where were we? We were talking about.
The inspection.
Obviously, the signage, which was actually in paragraph A, and the conservation easement restrictions in B. And there's only really one more point I want to make, and that's C.
Just, just as a point for the public's notice, we have a park, the, a sign out here for National Historical Site.
Yeah.
It's a cast brass or bronze. It's going to be something similar, a little bit bigger, but not much. And it'll be out of cast aluminum, raised letter, cast aluminum. I've had one company price one so far. It's not going to stop us from moving forward. Until we lock down those words, we won't move forward any further.
Someone says Judge Hinkley on this end.
So take a look at on the way out, on the right-hand side as you're exiting the driveway.
The lights are shining up on right now.
We're not putting electricity out there, are we?
No.
It wouldn't be, it would not be good for the animals.
Jim, what is the size of the sign that's?
I think it's just short, like 30 inches by 30. It's just so short, 3 by 3, so.
He said 3 by 4, but.
I think 3 to 4 feet might be overpower in that point. So you, you'll have to take a look at, at the area that's there and decide whether maybe 3 feet is plenty of size, or.
Right.
If this is only 30 inches, it seems like it's bigger than that, but not. But that's going to have, yeah, so I mean, 3 feet probably would be maybe a more.
And we'll use, I, I've actually, the company I spoke with, I said, we need your input on how big letters need to be from a distance. And so they will give us feedback on font size, font type, colors, to make it pop.
Mr. Gibson, what is the size of the Western Reserve sign? Do you know?
Oh, much smaller.
It's probably about 24 by 24, maybe. I don't think it's 30 by 30.
Yeah, it's much smaller.
It's, oh, it's, looks like wood, but it's at an artificial.
Yeah, I'm familiar. I mean, I've looked at the property and been over there and familiar with the sign. Let me know, Jim, when you want to talk about the signage and we'll have a discussion about that.
Absolutely.
Okay, one last point I have here, which is a rather important one, is in the event that the township make a decision that they don't want the property anymore. Whatever that may be, new trustees, new whatever decide. I do have a restriction here. And it's a case that I'm saying, if there is a change of ownership, the new owner should be nonprofit or another governmental entity, and should have the same purpose as the township, meaning conservation. In other words, I want to see it preserved. I don't want to see it. And with the conservation easement on it, that tends to limit what you can do for it, whether you own it or anybody else owns it. It's going to stay conserved. But I'm also putting in this restriction here that I would, I mean, things change. You never know. The township might decide that that's not something I want to do anymore in a property. Which case, then they would see what they could do in the way of moving it on. If they did, there's, there's some restrictions here that you have to consider. A new owner that has the same goals and has the same type of structure is what you have to preserve it. So that's sort of what I want to make sure that is, it is covered.
And I think that's helpful for our future boards and the future of this township, because we don't know what it'll look like 50 years from now.
And because beyond the folks that are here right now that really support this, you never know what the new regime, want to call it that, would be wanting to do.
Right.
So. Right.
That's all I have in the way of a review of the actual agreement.
Trustees, you have any questions for Mr. Gibson or the general?
I'm just so pleased.
I think, oh, I am too, Mr. Gibson. You have worked very diligently on this and addressed the concerns of the township. And I really appreciate your dedication to moving this forward because.
I've looked at other sources of other people that have it. And this seems like the best to keep local. And I think you all appreciate it more perhaps than someone else that has like, you know, 20 or 30,000 acres. It would be better, I think, that you, you have it here. So that's what my goal was, and it looks like it's going to come to fruition right now.
Well, this preservation of this land is just paramount to our town. We're so grateful for this gift. Thank you.
Well, maybe, maybe others will have the same idea. It's hard to say.
Maybe.
But that's all I really had.
Yes. So at this time, as far as words on the sign goes, I do not believe it's going to be this board that finishes that off. I mean, I'll be happy to stick around and work with them on it, but it's just going to happen too quickly. But we do know where we're going with it. We have the Hinkley Hills, the Hinkley Ridge.
Get it up in the spring or something like that, as to when they can get it done or later.
Well, spring, springtime would be a good time, because, you know, get into the ground and take care of that.
Any of you have any preference for either Hinkley Hills? Because Martha, you live in, on the ridge. You might like the word ridge rather than hills.
And that's part, you know, we could, we could maybe decide that tonight.
But right now, it would seem to go either way.
Personally, since we have a Hinkley Hills, I, I, I find that, I'm not in this area, but on the other side, I like Hinkley Ridge. It's not Michelle Ridge, so it's not, I don't find it to be confusing. We don't have a Hinkley Ridge that I'm aware of.
I know, we know. I was thinking the same thing, Hinkley Hills. So, yeah, I think, I think I'd prefer Hinkley Ridge as well. And in the end, we may vote. I would still defer to you. Thumbs up or thumbs down.
Martha, do you have a?
He's looking, he's looking to, come on.
Well, you know, that whole State Road is, is the ridge.
Yes, it is.
Yeah, and that's always what it's been known as for 100 or more years. So, but it's your preference. Yeah, it's your preference.
It's your preference.
Okay.
So the trustees would confer Hinkley Ridge? You prefer that?
Yes.
I prefer that. Okay. So if you're okay with that, we're going to move in that direction. Pricing for the plaque will be in that direction. And if it's printed, we'll get a final copy.
Which is five digits, and so does Hills.
Not worried about letters. Not worried about letters. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gibson.
Any further questions on this matter? I'd like to make a motion if not.
I just want to have a discussion about the sign.
Please do.
Regarding the size, I did bring this up at the last meeting, just something that I thought we need to have a conversation about. Obviously, from some of the township signage that we have, that belongs to the township itself, we haven't always followed our zone in terms of measurement or size. I, I do feel that that's something that the township should do. I think we should follow the same requirements that we ask our residents to follow. The way that, these are unique things, because not everything's addressed, obviously, in the zoning resolution. But we do allow a residential sign. It's really for addresses. But we allow residential sign. And that's probably why the conservancy follows the size that they do, because we allow a 2 by 2. Well, we allow 4 square feet. So I guess it doesn't matter what your configuration is, but we allow 4 square feet, which would be that, not 9 square feet, which would be what's requested in the contract. So I, I just want to bring that up and then see what the board's thoughts are regarding that. I'm curious, because Martha has approved more signage in the township than I have. So I'm curious of Martha's thoughts on the size as well.
Well, I, it's not residential. It's considered, basically, it'll be governmental.
Correct.
Once the transfer is done. And then I would recommend, if a larger sign is desired, that you go through the variance process. Just like anyone else would have to go through a variance process.
With the guarantee that it's granted?
No, not necessarily.
This is where we're at right now.
You know, because you would, I mean, that's what.
I didn't know you could get those.
That's what any other, that's what any other applicant that.
Right.
Wanted to go outside the code would have to do, so.
So with that said, should we just remove the dimensions of the sign within the contract?
And I don't know if.
Because we wouldn't know if we would be guaranteed a variance.
I don't know if Mr. Gibson wants to go down that path.
I agree on it to be legible, I assume.
Yeah.
Right.
I guess you're, I guess my question is, do you find the, the current signage to be legible or not that's there? Because that signage appears to be in compliance with zone.
It doesn't have a lot of teaching.
Right.
And this will have a few more words, so I can't really make that judgment as far as, I would say right now, it's, it's minimum size for what I think it would be if you really want to be able to read it as you're going by at speeds of 30 and 40.
We already have a sign out here that's 30 by 30, so we're already violating.
Well, it's government. Property is different than residential.
And that was my point. You know, I know we haven't, we haven't followed in the past.
This becomes government property.
And this is now going to be government property.
Correct, to be approved, so.
You know, why don't you bring it up to the, the new board, bring it up to the zoning commission?
Well, the, the problem is, is that it's written in the contract that the sign shall be at least 3 by 3. And that's, that's my, that's my only hesitancy, is that there's a defined, I, I have no problem with the sign. I have no problem with the language of the sign. My only concern is putting into the contract language that there's a defined size. And I'm okay if the size becomes, I have no problem with the size becoming 3 by 3. I just, if, if that's what's decided, I just don't know contractually we should be agreeing to that.
I disagree. I think that this is Mr. Gibson's property that he is granting to the township, and he gets to designate the size of the sign.
I guess I'm more interested in legibility maybe than size, so maybe it's a case of.
To Chris's point, you guys are still going to have to apply for a sign permit.
Yes.
Yeah.
Irregardless, and then you're putting the zoning inspector in a difficult position. So there are, there are mechanisms for this situation. And so I would imagine that the contract would read that in accordance with, with township zoning regulations and based and subject to a variance. And if not, then the sign would have to comply with zoning regulations. The township is no different than anyone else. We had to do it for the fire station. We had to do it for the service garage. We've had, we would have had to do it if the police building remodel would have been done. And so it's good governments to do so. But I think that's.
You know, I guess that'd be under review, but I guess I'm more interested, and as I said, in legibility. And perhaps you can test something by taking it here, and you may find, well, you don't really need to be 3 feet or 3 and 1/2 feet or whatever to get it that big. It may work fine to be 30 inches or something less than 3.
But I understand that you, from a historical perspective, as a gentleman who studies history, that you would want it to be seen by people regularly.
I'd like to have it so that they can read it, and they're not stopped.
Right.
Because we don't want traffic having to stop to read a sign.
Right.
Granted, here you have a little bit more flexibility in being able to park.
Right.
Look and look and read it, because it's, it's an important piece of history.
Exactly.
But this might have fewer words, but it just needs to be legible.
Okay.
We, I just put that in there, 3 by 3 minimum, to make it a point, to make it big enough to be legible. Now, maybe it's a restriction all of a sudden, and you may want to consider not using a number, but using just the word legibility. And then granted, that's more tenuous in, in words. But it might satisfy me once you start looking at a depiction of what it would be. And then I might case it that we don't need 3 feet.
Okay.
Very good.
Appreciate your flexibility with that. And I completely understand what your goal is.
And I. And I will be champion.
We're gonna sit down and work out the sign.
Yeah. And I will, I think the BZA, I don't know if you can get that on, on the B zoning commission, huh? Or the variance.
If it needs to go there, if it needs to go in that direction. Oh, no, not for tomorrow. No, no, no. I, I just think that this needs to just be tweaked very mildly in order for us to be able to move forward with it.
I think Martha's recommendation to follow the zoning regulations for a larger sign being addressed by a variance application would be appropriate wording to accept this motion.
I agree.
I agree with that. Yes. Mr. Gibson, thank you very much. I'm gonna make a motion to the board to accept this property, and we will address the sign in this motion. I am going to be championing for a three foot by three foot sign regardless of if it goes to zoning commission or whatever.
I am as well.
I think it's appropriate for the size of.
This motion is like a resolution.
Yeah, this is gonna be the, this is us accepting the property. Are we, any more discussion, trustees?
None.
None.
Just tell me I can make a motion for a resolution accepting the land donation being made by Charles Gibson, signing to the deed to transfer on parcel zero one six dash zero three D dash zero five dash zero four eight, which consists of twenty-two acres of land being held in conservancy. The sign requirement will follow the zoning regulations, and a larger sign may be addressed with a variance application. For your second.
Second.
I mean, any amendments or do we have more discussion?
Well, what's the second?
What's the second?
Yes.
No, I, I stand behind what I said, that I will absolutely champion for the.
That was perfect.
Thank you. Well, let's get a vote, roll call, we have a resolution, please.
Uh, Kalina?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Gibson, if there's any documentation you want us to sign, leave it with us. I can get it to you. Uh, we have a, we have the formal final copy that came from our prosecuting attorney. We'll sign that, put it on record.
I think if you don't mind, if you could sign one that I've got, and then I just have a copy of.
Let's assume that it's the same.
I'll just leave this and I'll take one.
Listen, will you do me a favor while I move on in this meeting and just kind of briefly, I'm pretty sure it's identical. You have multiple copies here?
For the residents that are not aware, Mr. Gibson has worked on this truly monthly for the past year. And uh, he, he has addressed a number of concerns. Um, he has looked at a number of options. And um, I, I, I just, I, I continue every conversation we have. I continue to be impressed, uh, not only by you personally, but uh, by your dedication to the community. Your dedication to want to preserve this property in perpetuity. And so thank you so much. Um, and it's, it's, it's my, my pleasure to know you a little bit better as well. I've enjoyed that.
Well, being part of the historical society across history also is tying me into the background of, of Hinkley and what it is and what I'd like to have it remain.
And he's a car guy too, so.
Thank you so much, Mr. Gibson.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson.
Chief Senator, do you have anything for the board? Thank you very much. Chief Grozebo, I know you have something.
Hi, Mr. Grozebo. Uh, request, uh, recent resolution number one two zero seven two one.
Uh, Chief, before you continue, can you grab the microphone closer to you, please?
Thank you. Thanks, Jen. That's why you're there. Were you able to hear him okay or was he faint?
No, I heard him perfectly fine.
Okay. Thank you.
Request recent resolution one two zero seven two one zero X to enter into the contract with the OBM that was approved on uh, December seventh, twenty twenty one. They um, when we went to get the final paperwork, they had text on a whole bunch of additional fees and charges without, so I'm like, no, we're not gonna do that. So further on, we're gonna go with our current uh provider.
That is not how Hinkley Township does business. So moved.
Second.
Seconded by Kalina. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 That's unanimous motion.
We ordered those parkas, the bright visibility jackets, logo. They uh, we would have had to actually double our order to have fire screened on the back of them. I found a company ran in Brunswick right there on West one thirtieth Funky Inc. That'll do the jackets for three dollars a jacket for fire on the back. So I'd like request appropriations not to exceed fifty dollars for lettering on the thirteen parkas through Funky, Funky Inc. warranty.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Can you get me a W nine?
Yes, I will. Yep, 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 yep. I've already reached out for them, but I, so.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you, Martha.
All in favor, say aye.
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 That's unanimous. That motion carries. Thank you.
Request appropriations uh, of twenty-one hundred dollars for six tires for squad thirty-seven two from Goodyear Tire on three oh three.
So moved.
Second.
But is it, is it not to exceed?
Oh, I'm sorry, not to exceed. Yes.
Okay.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed. So moved as amended.
And seconded as amended.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. It's unanimous.
Request appropriations for two hundred dollars, um, one hundred dollars for each. Who tends on fire, firefighter, Jared Bennett, to attend Wayne County Ice Rescue Class on January fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. This will certify them as our ice rescue technicians, which then they'll come back and share their knowledge and will be training in on our pond if it ever freezes and gets cold.
Terrific. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Real quickly, you have several uh, firemen that are ice fresh.
Yes, yes, we do. Yeah, we, and we, we put all our guys through, through training, but this is to certify them to be technicians.
That's good. That's good.
Most of the time, yeah, there's um, some of these classes you have to do annually, but they're doing the same stuff. So it's just to um, have these guys formally trained up.
Thank you.
We need to do a vote on that.
I know. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's motion carries. Thank you. unanimous.
Uh, request resolution enter in one-year contract with Condoc for printer services that costed nine hundred twenty-eight dollars and four cents, including eighteen thousand copies effective immediately. This is who we've been using for, I'm not even sure how many years. And, and we'll be um, reviewing different companies next year. And hopefully, they will try and tack things on after we've talked them about contracts.
So this is the contract we've already got?
Yes, yeah, this contract with our current machine and everything else.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. We have a resolution.
So moved as a resolution.
Is that correct?
Yes.
Cover vocal when you're ready, please.
Kalina?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
Last is, I got some good news. Our Fireman Association, I work with Jen, uh, me and her wrote a grant for the Dennis Leary Firefighter Foundation. And the firefighter foundation, or the Fireman Association received a grant for a force plenary training door prop. Um, it's about seven, the grant, the overall grant was close to eight thousand dollars. We'll be getting that and a uh, couple pieces of new hand tools to be able to use to force this. What this is, is a simulates a solid steel door that will actually allow us to force and break down the door, simulating forcing doors on residential homes and commercial doors, both inward and outward swinging doors. Uh, it's actually on a towel trailer. So once we have our, the training building set up, we'll be able to put it there. But we'll also be able to have it in the fire station to be able to train there. And it's something that one guy can go out into the bay and train at any time with it. So.
Congratulations. Another grant.
Jen, thank you for your work on that.
That's all I have. Merry Christmas, everyone.
Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Gibson. Do you want to, you know, I'll let you take care of that. All right, um.
Why, I was going to.
I thought so. I didn't see there zoning. Mr. Clean, do we have anything for zoning?
Uh, yes, we do. Uh, we have a.
Split. Well.
It, it isn't, it isn't. It's, I, I guess I'd call it more of a lot reconfiguration. Um, they're, they're not changing the overall acreage, but they're combining a number of lots to create fewer lots.
Got it.
So um, this is uh, Mr. Garapic's property. And I don't know how many lots. Tom and I talked about it. There was one, two, three, four, five, six. Um, I think there was, maybe there were seven lots total somewhere in there, but he's creating three.
He's creating three. That's what I have.
Right. And um, Tom's reviewed it, everything, everything meets zoning. They're, they're large.
Very large.
Yeah, they're very large parcels.
One is about seven acres, one's about eleven, and one's about twenty-eight.
Correct.
Okay.
Truly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all.
Want to sign that now?
Yeah, we can. And we have, this, this looks identical to me.
Okay.
Yeah, but you know what? I'll be honest, the only thing changed was uh, maybe two typos and is being transferred to Hinkley Township. That got changed to where trustees, Hinkley Township.
We're saying that?
From what you saw. Yeah, we should sign this.
What are you doing?
Signing a letter for Mr. Gibson.
Oh.
Accepting.
I thought you were doing.
No, we backed up a little.
Indigent very often.
Not yet.
Okay.
No, we're doing two things at once, Martha.
Yes, and I'm in the middle of it all.
Oh, you know, I don't have black. I don't have black.
Do you have to have the Mylar pen?
Well, this is paper, so you don't, but I like to use black on.
It's not as fancy as yours.
Anyhow.
You always have the best pens.
And I had spoken with Mr. Garapic some months ago, though. We talked briefly about his property. So there's that.
I know. You, are you gonna write in an expiration date?
Oh, um, I will leave that up to the zoning inspector.
Mr. Gibson, are you planning on sticking around or would you like these documents back? If so, I maybe I'll have to copy them. Or I, or I can get that, or I can get these to you later, tomorrow or something. All right. All right, thank you. Okay, three pages?
Three.
In black. I got black here.
And you have something for us to sign?
Yes. Um, look on the very last page. You sign underneath. There was no lines there, but there's one line. And I initialed each page.
Yeah.
Recognizing that we reviewed the documents. Sorry for the paper troubling out there. I know these microphones fit that up badly. Hard to get around it.
As long as we're not talking when we do it.
True. Just clean them, we'll leave these down here, pal. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Anything else out of zoning?
Um, no, done for that. That was it.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, in Maple Hill Cemetery, we have two deeds, one from Mr. Backing for one lot and six lots for the Pedalins. I'd like the two witnesses to uh, come up and witness our signing of these, acceptance of these deeds.
Do we have two witnesses?
We do. I've already procured them.
Oh, you first?
If Carrie, if Carrie wants to come up still.
Yes, Mrs. Kalina is trying to say, oh, I think we have Mr. Gibson, yeah, opportunity to sign some deeds.
Let me get my. There's several pages. It's like four.
We have the witnesses signing them all anyway.
First, sorry to make you stand for a few moments. Do they have a pen up here? Does it look like it?
No.
I, I have one. I can toss you here if you need one.
And you're gonna do it.
I do. He's well prepared.
Thank you very much, Mr. Studer.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Studer. Okay, Mr. Clean of the four jurors.
Yes, um. At the last meeting, the Board of Trustees had voted to extend our opening for accepting applications for the zoning commission. And the reason for that extension was because unfortunately, we lost uh, one of our valued members of our community and a longtime member of our zoning board, and that's Mr. Bruce Snyder. Um, so um, that was the reason that I couldn't really share that publicly at that moment in time. Uh, but we felt that we should extend that and um, and allow additional residents to apply for that opportunity. Uh, we did have eight individuals that were considered um, for that, and um, we conducted interviews. The um, residents were um, just simply outstanding, just, just a, an incredible group of individuals who are passionate about Hinkley Township, who have a desire to serve the community. And um, it was um, you know, it was really um, great to have the opportunity to hear their thoughts on the community and their desires for the future of the township. And I will say, um, as I reached out to each one of these individuals after the interviews, I shared with them that I hope that they will continue to participate with the comprehensive plan process because there will be lots of opportunity for resident input in that process. Um, the um, the loss of Bruce is truly the, the loss for our zoning commission of our senior member who had a lot of zoning experience. Um, we do have um, another member who has been with the township for quite some time, but not particularly on that board. And so when I look at the composition of a team, and then I do this whether this is a team of individuals for a board that I happen to be involved with, or if it's my own place of employment when I'm interviewing candidates uh, who will be part of my team where I work. Um, I, you know, I, I certainly look for individuals not like myself. Um, I look for individuals to be part of my team that can bring something to the table that I can't bring to the table. And um, and I, I guess that's one of the reasons I've been successful to work for the past couple decades. I just tried to bring in people that are better at things than I am, uh, knowing, knowing your weaknesses. So um, in uh, in reviewing these individuals, you know, you, you look at your team and you, and you see who's gonna complement that team. And um, one individual certainly stood out, and that's Mr. Bill Spellman. Uh, Mr. Spellman, for those of you that have been in the township for some time, you know, Bill served eleven years on the zoning commission. He uh, was chair of the board um, prior to me. And um, Bill's just an outstanding um, individual and a great board member as well. Uh, we did a fabulous job serving. And when he found out of this loss, um, which was devastating to all of us, because Bruce was a, Bruce was a unique individual, and you can't replace Bruce. Um, you know, we're not gonna be able to do that in any way, shape, or form. Um, I uh, Bruce would call me up and say, hey, boss man. And I used to, you laugh every time he's, my wife is shaking her head because she remembers Bruce calling on the phone and we would talk about zoning matters. Um, but I would tell him, Bruce, I'm not your boss. I'm, I'm just the guy that helps run the meetings. And I'm like, no, no, no. Uh, but it was, he had, he had a great sense of humor and a very unique way of looking at things. Um, we certainly can't replace him, but having Mr. Spellman step forward to bring um, some of that history of where, um, you know, some of even the current issues uh, that he brought up that the zoning commission is looking at right now and how some of those issues have been addressed in the past. Um, that was just an opportunity that I think the board um, felt very blessed to have him step forward and express that interest. So at the last uh, meeting that we held, uh, Mr. Spellman was appointed to Bruce Snyder's term, and uh, he was very honored um, to have the opportunity to uh, fulfill that term. Um, in looking at the other group of candidates, uh, we did have one individual who really stood out, and his name is Mr. Tom Schrader. Um, and I guess the reason I say stood out because they all stood out. Um, they all were unique. However, uh, the board member who is not gonna be with us next year, Mr. Arline, uh, because of a change of work schedule. Uh, the reason that uh, this board had picked Mr. Arline was because he had really a, a very strong business background that we felt was gonna be beneficial and provide a unique look at our zoning resolution from that business analysis standpoint. And Mr. Schrader has that same very, very strong business background. And so that was one of the reasons. He's, he's got a unique background um, that um, I, I think is gonna complement the board. So um, this board does not appoint that individual. Um, we recommend. So we made that recommendation to the incoming administration. And um, of course, if they would like some additional information on him, uh, or want to reach out to him, we have his resume, all his contact information. And um, I'm happy to share kind of a summary of that. Um, but we have. But we have a number of individuals that I certainly hope have the opportunity to serve our township in the future, and perhaps as board roles, because we've had several opportunities to appoint people over the past year. So that's a little bit of a summary on where we are with our appointments. In terms of OHM, Martha, I did find out today from Denise Testa that the Medina County will simply cut us a check for the grant, for the $3,500. So we don't have to invoice them, we don't have to do anything, they will send us those funds. I've had numerous conversations with Arthur Schmidt. He is ready to, he is from OHM, just to kind of back up a little bit for, I know we've got some new audience members here with us. The township at a prior meeting had voted to hire the services of OHM. I can't tell you what it stands for, it's three guys' last names. And I don't remember what they are, but they go by OHM, that's how everybody knows them. And we have opted to contract with them in order to perform an audit of the comprehensive plan. And that audit is going to help us identify areas that the community, through community input, and help identify areas that we think we need to address moving forward in the township. And that could be a number of different things. But certainly, we've all spent quite a bit of time talking about zoning this year, and so residents will have the opportunity to really look at the comprehensive plan and envision where you want the township to go over the next 10, over the next 15, over the next 20 years. That's the purpose of the comprehensive plan, it's a guiding document. So we have already voted to contract with OHM. And through numerous back and forth with our legal counsel, Mr. Richter, and their legal counsel, we have the final contract here from OHM. I've reviewed it, and of course, our legal counsel has. And they will start in January, and they will conclude on April 29th. That is the timeline for the comprehensive plan audit. And the, yes.
So would you amend your original resolution to include the $3,500 planning grant, which would result in a $4,000 township expenditure for this?
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So I feel that my goal before my term concluded was to wrap up all these loose ends. So I've been feverishly working on getting these things all finalized here before the 31st, and we're in pretty good shape. So I have this here. The contract has a number of strike throughs in it. This is their standard boilerplate contract they use for communities. They're actually working with Medina City right now as well on their comprehensive plan. So this is something that they do. And for a little history, they also helped township with the last comprehensive plan. Although, I will tell you that Arthur Schmidt was not involved with it. I find him to be, just have a lot of great ideas, look at things uniquely. I think the public's going to really enjoy, I think our residents are going to like working with Arthur. And so, and he brings some things, just zoning wise, that, you know, from an aesthetic standpoint, that I haven't really thought of, because historically, townships just have been always told not to really look at the aesthetic so much that we don't have that authority, but they look at things a little bit differently. So I think that's going to be refreshing. I will make a motion to amend my prior motion, hiring OHM for the Hinkley Township Comprehensive Plan Audit. And I will amend that, that the total is still $7,500. However, the township has received $3,500 from Medina County. Thank you Medina County for your support of this effort and helping us with our plan moving forward. And so that will leave a remaining balance now of $4,000. Need anything else in there, Martha?
Nope, that'll move.
Moving seconded.
Okay, resolution, Martha?
I think it was a resolution initially.
It was.
Okay.
Kalina?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you for your work on that.
It took a couple months, but we're in a good place.
We are in a good place, saves some money.
And thank you for all of your support. I know everybody was a little chomping at the bit, and I appreciate the public's support. I know everybody really wanted to move forward quickly with this, but we took a pause back, and it certainly paid off. Oh, you know, I have to print my name.
Are you the only signature?
Well, I don't think I should be. So I would think we would just go ahead and continue moving forward with that.
Very good.
Very good. Thank you, Trustee Burns, and thank you, Martha.
Thank you, Mr. Kline, for the hard work on that. We all know grants are tedious, but they are very beneficial to the township.
I was just in the right place at the right time.
Say what you want, thank you for the work.
Okay. And Janet King, I've spoken with Jennifer King regarding this. They do a great job, they're very, very responsive to the needs of the township, and we've had to call on them several times this year. And I don't see why we would consider changing. Suzanne's happy with them, so.
Chief Setner's happy with them.
Right, they do a great job. The reason that we got that cryptic 90-day email is because our contract actually states that they have to notify us 90 days prior to the scheduled expiration date. So I'm sure that's maybe something we added in, that sounds like maybe that was a Brian Richter thing, but it's just smart business that if you're going to change cleaning companies, you have a three-month head.
So when is our renewal?
Well, I would think it would be February, right? And it'll just automatically renew. It says this agreement shall be automatically extended and renewed for additional two-year terms on the same terms and condition unless either party shall give written notice. So I haven't been notified of anything changing in the contract at all. And we had already made an amendment early in the year, I think, to the contract, so.
So you make a motion to renew?
Make the motion to renew?
Yeah, we can do that then. So I'll make a motion to renew the maintenance agreement, which is a cleaning contract, and with Janet King. And they are the king of cleaning, by the way. But that will, the performance of services scheduled shall begin.
You know what, I think just the contract is fine.
Okay, then that's it.
So moved, or seconded?
Moved and seconded, any further discussion?
No.
One favor, say aye, aye?
Aye.
That was unanimous, most of Kerry's next.
Yeah, I believe this starts March 1st, actually, is the date, so I think it ends in February. And the next item, Trustee Burns, I'm going to have you actually talk a little bit about, this is Senate Bill 52? Yeah, you want to talk about that a little bit?
Certainly, so I attended a county commissioner public hearing a week ago regarding Senate Bill 52, which is the utility scale solar and wind power installations in townships, any government subdivision. County with the Senate Bill 52 would take the ability for the township to decide whether or not we want a solar or wind farm in the township. We're talking about utility grade power, 50 megawatts, hundreds of acres of land for solar, hundreds of acres of land for wind. That being the case, what I garnered from this was, it's not in stone. If there is by chance in the future, 10, 20 years from now, what if the Senate passes and it doesn't change? We can approach the county commissioners and say, we would like to take this parcel of land and turn it into utility grade solar property. That being the case, I kind of changed my position, knowing that there's an out, there's a back door. Before, I was saying, no, let's exempt ourselves from this countywide mandate and let Hinkley Township decide its own future. The advantages, and Chris, you might go speak to the advantages of letting the county commissioners and Medina County Planning Association be involved in decisions of this magnitude for the county.
Yeah, we talked about this a little bit at the last meeting. We already have a mechanism in place, and Jack might be able to share a little bit of information on this, just because I'm sure it's something that's been, I'm sure that's something that you're aware of as well. I believe that trustee, or excuse me, that county commissioner Hambley has been the one that's kind of spearheaded this, at least in the county planning commission meetings, he's been the one to talk about it. And I think it's a great idea, and we have the model in place, which is the Medina County Planning Commission already, to look at these on individual basis if they come up, and consider those exemptions. If that exemption is warranted or requested, and they are looking at the entire county, it just really makes sense. You know, townships have very little authority, especially when it comes to anything that's related to a utility. So I think the overall model that they have in place is a good model, and I'm sure it will be one that other, you know, just like everything else that we do in the county oftentimes, other counties follow our lead. And so I don't see why we would not want to support what the commissioners have in place here.
I agree.
I agree too.
The development that's already occurred in Hinkley really makes very little to no land available for such a massive scale of utility installation. And for that reason, we're probably not on the radar for any utility. Yes, that could change, you know, what happens 10 years from now is going to be very different than it is today. But we still have the ability to make edits to this current policy, this Senate bill. Should we choose to do so, or should a future board choose to do so?
Yeah, so a future board could remove part of the restriction. The way this works is the entire township would be restricted from this, which, I'm going to be honest with you, when we spent a year talking about alternative energy at the zoning commission level, that's exactly what we did, that's exactly what that language does. That language does not allow for the commercial generation of wholesale selling of energy. It's supposed to be for your own private use. And so this, to me, really is just complimentary to what we already have in place in terms of that. And if somebody has a great idea to put something in, well, that particular parcel can be removed from that exclusion, and the Board of Trustees would have that ability to put that request forward. So it comes down to, to me, just like any other zoning matter, it's looked at on individual case-by-case basis. But the township as a whole would be protected from somebody outside coming in and doing something that maybe we wouldn't really want them to do, and our neighbors wouldn't want to be impacted by. Which it could have, you know, that type of effect on, you know, we're mainly residential, so.
I spoke to Denise Testa at length about it, and I, you know, the conversation really was that Hinkley's topography would not allow for this.
I don't think it's a reality.
Right, and to your point, Jim, you know, the fact that we can come in and do an exemption if need be.
They like Jim Sack, things change, technology changes down the road, whatever, we can revisit this.
I agree. So we send an email to support?
I'd like to make a motion to send an email to support the county commissioner's decision on Senate Bill 52.
Is that your motion? Seconded.
Seconded, any further discussion? Call in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, I will draft a letter. If you guys want to sign it, it was one signature and let it go, you're welcome to, I can hold it up a day. They want to spike tomorrow, by the way, so.
Send an email.
I'm going to sign tomorrow.
I'll send an email, I'll copy you on it.
Very good, thank you.
That would be great.
Thank you, Mr. Kline.
And this is.
And that's just really quick, that's going to go before the commissioners, what day?
I mean, hey, did we do a vote on that all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, we did.
Thank you, Martha.
That hearing is January?
Let me look there, wait, I think I have it. Yeah, they want, January 4th. January. Yeah, requesting feedback regarding the attached draft resolution with plans to present and vote at the Board of Commissioners meeting scheduled for January 4th, 2022.
And at what time?
I don't know that. Probably be at their regular time, which is typically in the morning.
We have a 9:30 work session that day, so I won't be able to be at the hearing.
Yeah, and they're requesting feedback by noon, Thursday, December 23rd.
Okay, so in two days.
Yeah.
Okay. Very good, thank you.
And this is my final report as a township trustee. I will tell you that four years ago, I looked at my wife and I said, you know, I think I'm going to put in for an alternate on the zoning commission. And it's not going to take much time, honey, so, because she knows I tend to get involved with things, it just, it just happens. And certainly, you know, nobody in this room could have ever imagined where all of our lives have went over the past four years. You know, just the loss that we've all suffered. We've lost two members of our township family, and just so many more throughout our community, throughout the entire Medina County community. And I will just tell you that I've been truly, truly honored to finish Ray Schultz's term to serve on his behalf. And it's just to help see some of his goals and his visions and see them to fruition. It's just really been my honor to serve this community. I've enjoyed working with all of you, and I've enjoyed the camaraderie from my fellow trustees, and Martha, and our township departments. I thank all of you for your support and for helping me, you know, see some of those visions to reality. You know, for me personally, I'm also really very proud of everything that we've accomplished together, because we persevered as a community. We've overcome these challenges and these hardships together. And when I look back at the past four years, at some of the accomplishments that we've made together, it just makes me very proud of all of us here in this room, and then those that are virtually in the audience as well. You know, I look back at my time on zoning, and we closed some gaps in zoning. And since that time, I mean, we haven't had, we haven't had anybody even ask about conservation development. And you know, we've made a couple of changes to the conservation development language over the past four years. And there's a lot of pressure in Medina County. I mean, I have to tell you, just last month, there was a conservation-style development that was approved by the county in Sharon Township, there was one. A month before that, Liverpool Township, so there's a lot of pressure out there, but we've been blessed in Hinkley Township. We've also, zoning-wise, we've had a number of site plan reviews, but we still, even to this day, we have not had a rural residential subdivision planted in the past four years. We haven't had one make it to the final step in the process. And so, you know, when it comes to keeping Hinkley rural, you know, everybody in Hinkley Township has worked hard to keep Hinkley rural, and I can tell you that firsthand. We've supported the expansion of Parkland together, and both through the metro parks and as a township. So I'm proud to have been a part of that, and 350 Hinkley, we've worked, I know Richard Pearl's out there somewhere, but as one of the representatives, we've worked really, really closely with that entire team. And we have, you know, truly the best alternative energy language in all of Medina County. You know, we have led the way in that. And we've responded to a number of requests from the community for a variety of things, including moving forward this evening with the comprehensive plan, you know, beginning that audit process. We've had a number of zoning changes that have taken place over the years, especially event planning took some time, setbacks, and, you know, setbacks for both buildings and developments. And, you know, together, we've been very fiscally conservative, I feel, and Martha, I know Martha will ensure that future boards are very fiscally conservative. There's no doubt about that. And most importantly, I think what I'm most proud of is we've protected the township. We've provided the township with safe roads. Jim, you've done an outstanding job during your term of focusing on roads and providing our traveling public, whether they're residents or not, with safe roads to travel upon. Our road department's done a great job with that. And our safety forces, you know, we've supported, I feel everything that our safety forces have needed to provide us with safe neighborhoods. And, you know, that's when people come home, that's what they want. And so personally, for me, I just want to thank everybody in this room for your support. And um you know, that's when people come home, that's what they want. And so personally, for me, I just want to thank everybody in this room for your support. Um it it's really been my, my, just my honor um to be able to serve you and uh serve your needs in the community. And I wish the future administration um continued success because this is a great group of people who are very dedicated.
Wow, how do we follow that?
Thank, thank you all. Thank you all.
Thank you. It it was really a heck of a year. I mean, for Jim and I to be in that position to try to find someone to erase, um I'm sorry.
True, it's very true.
You were the perfect person and working with you this year has just been an honor and a privilege.
Right. Uh it's been my blessing. So, thank you all.
You're not going away. You're like a bad COVID.
That's terrible.
You're lingering. No, we want you. It's been a pleasure working.
Good lord.
Well, well, thank you. Thank you all.
All right.
Thanks a lot for making me cry.
Trustee Augustine.
All right. So I'd like to make a motion to create the Comprehensive Plan Steering Committee. We've gone through this process every meeting. I've explained it over and over and over to you guys. I don't think you need to hear it again. That committee is going to consist of Paul Easterling, Mary Griffiths, M.D., Lou Benzen, David Yatsko, Richard Pearl, Paul O'Neill, Gary Woolney, Brian Cadham, Jacob Studer, Cara Pay, Kenton Grimes, Melissa Augustine, Chris Kleena, and zoning commission member David Manley. Our alternates will be Tom Schrader, Cindy Engelmann, and Jim Byloski.
Thank you very much for your work.
I'll make that a resolution.
Um, yes, I'd like to make that a resolution.
So amended.
Um we did have one gentleman. His name is Dennis Krieger and we had him on as a member. We have a couple of different options as to how we want to handle this. He cannot commit to the time that would be garnered for this. Um should we just leave it as is?
I think so. It's going to be just challenging to get together before the end of the year or whatever to find another person to fill in. We have to, we could still have our alternates, which.
We do have.
We have, right.
And this is to do.
I struggled with who was going to be the alternates because they were, they were all, they were all so good. We s- we had selected those individuals because of what they were bringing to the table. So I I don't think we I I think we have the alternates in place because of this very reason.
Right.
So.
And just to remind everyone, of the fifteen that were chosen, five of them were chosen by all three trustees, five of them were chosen by two of the trustees. So these are people that stood out to all three of us and then to our non-biased party.
And um and they were com- completely anonymous.
Completely anonymous.
Completely anonymous. We had very little information other than uh, you know, background on the candidates. And I think we all had the same goal and that was diversification
Diversification.
Of of the group. Um you know, there's there's uh individuals on there that own hundreds of acres and there's individuals that have less than acre on there. So it's.
And they live all over.
From all over the, from all over the township.
Some people live in developments, some people are farmers. It's a vast grouping.
Yes.
We have a motion on the floor?
Resolution.
Res- well, motion for resolution. Uh do I hear a second?
Second.
Kleena's seconds. Any other discussion? Call a vote, please.
Kalina?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
Yes, that motion carries.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Augustine.
And thank you for your diligent efforts on that. That was a huge task with ninety-eight people.
It was a dill, just redacting ninety-eight names and email addresses and such was a a task. So I have um a motion here Suzanne Peterlin would like for me to um make with regard to inventory. And she sent me an email and I had it up, but then I was working the virtual system.
You got it?
Oh, you've got it. Awesome. Thank you, Martha. All right. So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to discard the following items. Um stuffed chairs, four tan, two blue, one pink. Stuffed chairs with wheels, four blue, one tan, one black. Armoire for from police department. Office desk with above shelving and credenza, three-piece, broken. Executive desk, uh former fire chief office, Canon Saffy CP seven-two-oh, IBM wheel rider, Lexmark typewriter, broken. Oron TV model, uh number STV two-seven-six-three-A, Emerson DVD, VCR, SNU uh four-five-three-oh-two-one-nine-one-B, three-shelf TV stand model, EWD nine, uh two-two-oh-three, Sharp TV, Lintron, STN five-four-three-two-one-one, keyboard, NSBD four-oh-four-two-two-five-nine-two, and a coat rack, broken. And these um we'd like to discard because they're no longer of service um or have any mon- monetary value.
Seconded.
Thank you.
Any further discussion?
They've been sitting in the old fire station bays waiting for this motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Motion carries.
Thank you. All right. And I'd like to make a motion to approve destruction of records in accordance to township retention schedule.
Second. Kleena's seconds. Any further discussion?
Melissa, can you read um the motion? Do you have it on your sheet Suzanne had written?
Memorandum.
There's this one.
No, I don't have that one. Or maybe it's in my pack.
Just to enter it into the record.
Okay, motion to approve destruction of records in accordance to township retention schedule, schedule number twenty-dash-twenty-eight correspondence uh fast fax mails, two thousand three through twenty-twenty, schedule number twenty through forty-four manuals, handbooks, policy manual for service employee two thousand, schedule twenty through seventy-four telephone messages for administration cemetery zoning paper and electronic twenty-ten through twenty-nineteen. Get those both back to her. Thank you.
Seconded as amended.
Thank you.
And all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right. I have a list of thank yous. I want to thank um the Hinkley Cubs Outpack three-five-two-oh for lighting the little tree at Veterans Memorial Park. They did a fantastic job and decorated it and looks great for the holiday season. Um also want to thank the Hinkley Garden Club for decorating Town Center for the holidays. And I want to thank the Police Association for hosting um cops, kids, and claws, not shop with a cop. Um we had forty-nine community members that were helped this year and the Fire Association, thank you for creating and hanging out in the rain for five hours with the Santa parade.
Yeah.
We are very grateful for all of you guys. So thank you to all of those groups. Um and
Definitely.
Lastly, I was appointed to Medina County Planning Commission for next year for twenty-twenty-two and I'm very excited about the opportunity. I think it'll give me an an opportunity to serve the county as a whole and better myself for the position here in Hinkley Township to serve the community here. So at this time, I'd actually like to ask trustee Kleena, would you mind serving as my alternate?
I would love to serve as your alternate.
Wonderful. Thank you. And that is all.
Thank you for volunteering for that. That is a volunteer position, so it's it's a commitment of time and energy and I didn't thank you so much.
And sometimes you're in the right place at the right time.
And you get a grant.
And you can get a grant. So and congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations to you, trustee Augustine. Um she was actually elected by the Medina County Township Trustees Association, which is representatives of all seventeen um township boards of trustees. And so uh congratulations to you and I'm looking forward to uh continuing to work together with you in the future.
Just don't make me cry anymore.
That's exciting for me.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, um on our, my docket, we have the Orkin Pest Control Annual Agreement. Uh Mr. Bahari, do you want to fill the board in about the agreement at all? Make a motion?
Yeah. I'm going to continue the Orkin Pest Control Annual Agreement for county year two thousand twenty-two in amount of two hundred eighty-eight.
I'm sorry, Mike. I can't hear you hardly at all. Is that Mike's salon?
Is this for the service department?
Well.
Who's it for?
It's for the Doug, this whole area. I mean, he's bringing it up.
I just need to know who to bill it to.
Uh it's for police.
You have your own Orkin contract.
This is for police admin, Old Fire Station Historical Society.
You have your own contract.
This, it doesn't matter. I mean, he's presenting it for.
No, no, he's got a separate contract.
That's not the one he's approving. He's approving this one.
So I, I know I have it in front of me, Jim. What I'm asking is I need to know who to bill this to. So who is Orkin?
It's a continuation automatic renewal contract, so we've not changed anything. Police Department has part of it, historical building, administration, Old Fire Station. However you build in the past is how you'll build in the future.
I don't. The only person that's had an Orkin contract is Chief Senator. This is not his contract.
That's not what I was told by Orkin when I spoke with him, but.
Okay, he's got a separate contract. That that, that's why, that's why I was just asking.
Then it, then it's excluding the police department and it's admin, Old Fire Station Historical Society.
Okay. That was, that answers my question.
Thank you.
And Chief, if you've been paying for this all this time, thank you.
No, this is not the same contract. That's why I'm asking.
I get it.
Separate. This is a new contract or a separate.
It's a, it's a renewal.
Okay. I just need a clarification on whom to bill because I I surprised me when Mike said it. I didn't think service had it. That's why I asked you.
He's just presenting it.
Thank you. Who's on first?
Um, right. Yeah, I'd like, I'd like to uh amend that motion. Uh and let me put this on the record so it doesn't have to be researched in the future. This agreement automatically renews and required a sixty-day cancellation notice. It is an annual contract that starts the first of the year. Motion uh moved and amended. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Um I'm going to move on to the indigenous burial policy. Um at the last regular meeting, we approved an indigenous burial policy resolution. That was sent to us by the prosecutor's office. It's a PDF, an uneditable PDF, so we had what we had and it was sent to me at the last hour. So I found it really minimal errors. Typo, misspelled word and two typos. Um it's the same policy with the exception of that. I'd like to present this to the board as an amendment to that uh resolution to accept the previous resolution policy. If you guys are in favor. So just tell me.
Is that your motion?
Well, I don't know if I should make this as a resolution or motion amended.
Did Brian Richter tell you to make a motion?
No.
So these are just typos?
Typos, nothing consequential.
Don't need to do anything. You just need to fix the typo.
We will sign a new document. Thank you, Martha. We'll sign a new document, put it into the record.
I read it several times. It reads great, Jim. Thanks for your efforts going back and forth on that one.
Thank you for your.
That's an important service that the township provides when it's needed.
And it's far and few between, but.
It it is.
It is.
Okay, um this time I'd like to make a motion to appropriate funds. This is in addition to the agenda by late. To appropriate funds to cover the cost of legal work completed by Exashion and Rich, completed for on the non-union full-time employee policy manual at a cost not to exceed fifteen dollars, to be a portion to each department based on the number of employees.
Hundred dollars?
Fifteen hundred?
Yeah. You said.
You said fifteen dollars.
Fifteen hundred dollars to be a portion to each department based on the number of employees under the policy.
Second.
Second by Kleena. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you. That's all I have.
Um I'd just like to um put into the record that um Monique Marzullo Ashrell was sworn in last Tuesday evening.
Thank you.
And uh she, her oath was administered to a a nice crowd, so she is also too official. Um and then I'd like a motion to adopt resolution twelve-twenty-one-twenty-one dash zero four, which approves the reallocation of a hundred dollars from twenty-one ninety-one, seven-six-zero-seven-two-oh buildings to twenty-one ninety-one dash two-ten dash two-thirteen Medicare.
Seconded. Or so moved, so moved.
Second.
Seconded. Any further discussion?
No.
Roll call vote, please.
Uh Kalina?
Yes.
Augustine?
Yes.
Burns?
Yes.
And the current fund status is six million eighty thousand, six hundred and eight dollars and fifty-nine cents, of which one million sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and fifty-four dollars and eighty-two cents are in cold investments and five million sixteen thousand, six hundred and fifty-three dollars and seventy-seven cents are in primary checking.
Thank you.
And then I too would like to thank Jim and Chris for their service. And I very much did enjoy working with both of them and wish them the best of luck.
Thank you very much, Martha.
Thank you, Martha.
Appreciate it. Um this time I'd like to open the uh forum podium up in public. Anybody want to comment, questions for the board? No? This time I'd like to make a motion to pay the payroll and bills for a hundred eighty thousand, eight hundred sixty-nine dollars and thirty-one cents.
Second.
Seconded. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Um before we conclude the adjournment, I want to take a moment to thank uh this wonderful township, the employees in this township that have helped me on this journey. Um it's been a very uh trying uh journey. We've had lots of uh very difficult situations with COVID and the passing of trustee and now a zoning commission member. Uh but it's also a lot of successes of those. I'm very proud. Uh and certainly wouldn't do much if anything differently than what I did. Uh I want to thank Martha Cathcartwood for her wisdom, her encouragement, and her patience. Uh on this, this is a learning process, folks. Unless she's done this for years, you don't, it's just something you need to learn. And also both of our trustees and even trustee uh Lettsco for when she was in the office while I was here. Uh you guys have been really supportive, wonderful comrades, uh great to work with. Chris, uh your knowledge and experience that you bring to the township, you bring uh with with enthusiasm, encouragement, and it's beneficial to an nth degree. I can't tell you how much we're grateful. And trustee Augustine, um I'm really impressed with how you dig into issues to learn the stuff that's very challenging and difficult. You shy away from nothing. And I'm really impressed. I'm proud to be working with you. Uh thank you to the kind citizens who've greeted me with smiles and wonderful conversation. With that, I will conclude. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting.
Uh prior to that. Thank you. Thank you, trustee Burns. It's been my pleasure to serve with you. Really, it really has.
Appreciate it. There's a motion on the floor. Thank you.
Now, you, you have, you've taken on things that no one else would take on and I don't think anyone knows the exorbitant amount of time that you spend and on Hinkley topics and working for the people of Hinkley. So thank you.
For all the grants.
And there's a mirror reflecting it right back on you because you've done the same. I've watched it. So then you, you too, Mr. Kleena. Um with that, I do have a motion on the floor to adjourn.
I will second.
And we are going to adjourn. Let me amend that to uh seven fifty-eight PM. Seconded at seven fifty-eight PM. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.